Zoom. I don't know if I'll roll, but unlike the Zoom meetings, we can just name ourselves as we go around. Start on my right.
Dana Hovius.
Blake Powell.
Rick Smith, I'm chairman.
McTanner.
Sue Weber is their clerk. Larry Dunn is one of our elected alternates.
Funny for a while.
Yeah, and a new alternate.
Yeah.
Come July 1st. And. Oh. Antina. This mask stuff has got to come. Okay. And I can't use mine because it's in glasses. Okay, there is no public hearing tonight. The next item on the agenda is that point where we ask for public comment for issues that are not on the agenda. So, for example, emerging issues that people would want to commission to be aware of and to start thinking about or looking into. So, for the audience, is there anybody who has one of those types of issues they'd like to bring to our attention? See? Paul?
I'd like to encourage the commission to use terms that are more outgoing and encouraging and supportive of the community. Term engagement sounds very contradict conflicting and military and not conducive to a pleasant evening's discussion. The other point I'd like to mention that I think long and hard whenever you decide to go into executive session, I think you lose a lot of, spend a lot of social capital. Everybody kind of thinks the worst when boards and commissions go into executive session.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Applications for architectural design review. This is the application of Advanced Improvement Inc. for a certificate of design appropriateness to construct a second-story dormer for a bathroom at 23 Prospect Hill Road. Bill, your own.
Okay, thank you. I know you all have packets. I did bring the kind of larger version in case that's important.
Yes.
Or helpful, okay. So greetings and welcome back to some normalcy here. My name is Bill O'Donnell. I am with Advanced Improvements. We are the heart as the general contractors for this dormer addition at 23 Prospect Hill Road. Our goal is to keep with the architectural integrity and character of the neighborhood and the house itself. We hope that we're accomplishing that goal with this dormer. It's about eleven and a half feet across and about four and a half feet tall. The homeowners are Bruce and Jacqueline Pockery, by the way. The pitch of the roof is 12 everywhere. The pitch of the dorm will be six, but it blends and dives into this pitch here. So we're not expanding past the envelope of the house at all, not going higher and not going wider. The homeowner's goal is to add a bathroom to the house because there's only one bathroom in the house. It's on the first floor. They're getting a little bit older. So, um, the packet, I hope, speaks for itself and I am open to questions, I guess.
Can I send in this question? Okay, zero motion.
I move to determine that based on potential impact on neighborhood architectural harmony and character of property values, we still want to have a reading of our public opinion basis. The level of review being inappropriate for this application is subject to the under section 2.26.6.5 and to both leave all specifics of the requirements that are not included in this application because we already gave the commission its determination that the application is compliant with section 2.26 and to accept the application as concluded to approve the application of advanced improvements for a certificate of design appropriateness to build a bathroom addition per point at 23 Prospect Hill Road now, given it meets the criteria set for in section 2.26 of designer ordinances where you know.
Is there a second?
Second.
McTanner, second. Discussion on the motion.
I'd just like to note that I think it's a really nice solution. Looks good.
Thank you very much.
The vision blends in very nicely.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, others? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So it is unanimous? If you catch those, maybe you get it from that right away.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And we are approval of meeting minutes. This was the 15th page, June of May 11th. And just did not have the time to also do May 25th. We had these last week. Does anybody have comments, questions on that? Seeing none, without objection, we'll call those approved. Okay.
Rick, I'd just like, I didn't announce that, you know, there's, it reads like a transcript.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a.
This was unusual.
I'm sorry?
This was unusual. This wasn't there for the meeting.
Right.
So she would listen to every word and.
Right.
Wrote it and if we were doing it a different way, she would have someone else.
Okay, well, let's see how it goes. It's just, I think it's, you know, I'm a believer in relatively great minutes that say, once you've decided, not all the dialogue that leads up to the decision. Because I think if they're too long, they're off putting in terms of people reading them, understanding what we're doing. Just a personal objection.
Actually, except that you've already approved them, we could have just gone back and passed the.
I think.
For the next night.
Be a lot of work.
Yeah, it would. It's harder to go that way than that, yeah.
Okay.
Good. And that'll save Sue a lot of work, too. That'd be great. Okay, next one is the approval of the May zoning enforcement officer's report. There are some things that Bill needs to check on this and he did not get a chance to. I would suggest we defer this until we hear from him. There's no sense of proving something when we know there are changes. Couple of addresses and things that weren't legible and didn't catch that right away. So unless there's objection, we'll just pass those off to the July meeting.
No questions?
Seeing none, so we'll postpone till July. Okay, old business. First one is public input process for special meeting to obtain informal public comment. This thing has been battered around. It went out. This is the one that went out in the mass mailing last week. So everybody on the non-email list has gotten this. If you need a copy tonight, the commissars have it. I just put it on the agenda in case anybody had a thought that they wanted to add in, but, you know, hopefully it's only a minor change because that's kind of what we've established we'll use for the rules to get public comment. No comments, okay, so we'll move on to that. Next one, potential discussion of STR issues. I really didn't expect to have any, but I thought when you have a meeting and you have this burning subject that's been in front of us for two years, I would leave it to the commission to decide if they had anything they wanted to offer. Certainly no need to. Commissioners, seeing none, okay. Okay, status of the workshop for Esther Point Beach volleyball court. That's going to end up top of bill. It's been very hard for some reason tracking Keith down. We've talked to him, Bill has talked to him at least three times since the last meeting. And initially, I thought we could have this workshop between May 25th meeting and July 8th because there's a fair amount of space there where we don't have meetings. And it's been so long to get a read from him. And also the possibility to have that as a hybrid Zoom in person. That we've kind of lost the window to schedule it and do it before July 8th. Reason it might be a hybrid, Kristin Niergaard has asked, since she still lives in Great Britain, whether there would be a way for her to participate via Zoom. And I asked John and he said, well, there is a provision of the FOIA law that allows for that kind of interaction, but logistically you have to be careful that the same opportunity presented to her has to be the same that any other member of the public would use if they wanted to. Even if they happen to be down the street and just want to get off the couch for the night. You know, you can't make a judgment call on that. So it would have to be available to anybody and the opportunity would have to be announced. And therein is why it becomes complicated. If it's just one person, yeah, you could do that. She may have to listen in on a cell phone of one of her colleagues or friends and participate that way. That's where John says, do you prepare? Okay, good, thank you. She may have to participate. And John had said, you can do that under the FOIA. But same opportunity would have to be for everybody. So if anybody else wants to do it, they have to have somebody here in the audience that has their phone calling back and forth with that person. And then it's a workshop so they get to participate. So it complicates it. So when Bill gets back to me with a date or a series of dates and I've asked him to see if the town has a hybrid type apparatus in one of their meeting rooms, because we don't, town council, whatever. That's what he's got Keith checking on and he's going to talk to him again tomorrow. So that's the status of that. We can't pick a date yet. Any comments, questions, suggestions that would make my life easier on this one to, you know, brainstorm to try and get that working better?
Yeah, McTanner, you know, I'm certainly sympathetic with Krista's concern over what's going on there and wishing to be involved. But I am concerned also about the complexity of trying to have a hybrid solution. When we talked about that amongst ourselves and we were contemplating how we're going to handle our information session. And it just strikes me as very complicated to have some people participate remotely via Zoom and the majority of other people be present. It's just, I, well, maybe it's the fact that I haven't done it and I haven't been in a room that's properly equipped to do it. For the sake of including one person, I'll be a very important person. I question the visibility to work that right now.
My question is just the fairness of it all. Meanwhile, I understand Krista's desire to participate. On any other issue, not that issue, there are plenty of people who want to participate. And are you going to, you know, you can't pick and choose which hearings you bifurcate with Zoom and which ones you don't. Because somebody's going to complain and say, well, that, that meeting we allowed Zoom, but this meeting we didn't. And I just think that's going to open the can of worms.
There was a bit of a distinction between a workshop as opposed to a public hearing. The distinction is that John expects that we will not participate much. This will be between the residents of Noble Avenue and the town with us maybe asking a question here and there, maybe making a suggestion, but he felt that it's really, we're facilitating it according to our ordinance. But we shouldn't be the driver of the whole thing.
But just like on July 8th, you know, call it whatever you want to call it. It's not a formal public hearing, but you're not having it hybrid. And there are already people who have indicated that they wanted it to be via Zoom. I remember one meeting we had, one woman had spoken up, and I think we had lost you at that point. But she had spoken up and said, you know, is it going to be Zoom because I live far away? So I mean, I just think, yeah, that you have to apply your rules the same for everyone. So if you're going to do a Zoom with that project there at Esther Point, then you have to do it with the others. And that, I just think it's.
All right, let me ask John that very question.
Well, we're going to, we have to, and I'm, I mean, I agree. I'd be real cautious about carving out special exceptions for individuals for any of these meetings. I mean, let's just pick a policy and stick with it. Now, I don't know what the critical path is for this project and if the timing's that critical, but if it could be delayed a little bit, I mean, I'd be open to that. I don't want to delay the project any more than necessary, but that's, there's some legal room in their schedule. That might be a better solution.
I don't know how long they're going to be there. It's kind of a long-term duty assignment.
Right.
All right. We were talking to Larry Dunn just before the meeting and he indicated that the governor at the end of the month was going to establish some sort of a rule about hybrid meetings. Can we recognize him to give us any information with respect to that?
Sure, as long as the commission is willing, that's fine. All right, I can ask. Larry, you want to just start that?
Yeah, I talked with the town yesterday for the other commission duty and I asked the same question. So right now is, they do not have a definitive answer. They expect the governor to do a ruling, which would be including a legislative change to allow Zoom meetings. Because right now, the law, as you know, does not allow you actually do a remote meeting. So two things have to happen. Half the legislature has to make the modification and then go through the process and the governor would sign it. So right now is, we're talking about, depending on the date, I would expect that it's going to be a month before we have definitive feedback on that. My guess is, given the input and the fact that the town is investing on doing some hybrid installations as we speak, that there'll be an accommodation for that because so many people liked the fact they can, you know, participate remotely. But then there'll be specific rules associated with a hybrid one to get to your question, what does that mean? So I think there's two levels. One, can you do it? And two, what does it mean? And today, don't have that answer. I would expect it within 30 days. So that may or may not allow you to do the, you know, the workshop.
Well, Larry, if the legislature has to be involved and they're just doing a three, you know, a short special session to deal with two or three items, it's unlikely that there will be a legislative decision.
Well, my understanding is there was already a proposed one in the system. So where is it in the system? I don't have that answer for you, but I hear you that.
Unless it was teed up in the call of the special session.
Special session, yeah.
I don't think they can act on it.
All bills not voted on die at the end of the session. So the regular session in the spring, they're done.
They're done, yes. So I did think they were working on a special session or the governor could then extend his, by executive order, you know, extend this for another period of time. So there's like two avenues there.
That'd be interesting.
Well, you know, we will see.
Well, because it's unrelated to COVID. It's for government and public efficiency. So how do you, anyway, that's interesting that they're actually in government that's moving at the speed of light to say, this worked well, so let's try and get it done in a month. I don't think they will, but.
I, I, what I'm saying, I ask everyone.
It'd be another tool.
Yes, it'd be another tool.
All right, good. In any case, there's no way it's going to happen for July 8th. You've already put the rules out and those are the rules. I'm going to ask John anyway, but I hear what you and Beth have both saying about consistency of our approach so that we're not, it's not suggested that we're playing favorites or putting our thumb on the scale for one issue and not the other. I mean, I get that point. All right.
I have a related.
Okay, yep, Dan, comment?
You know, based on your discussion with John about our role in this workshop, it strikes me that based on everything that we as a commission went through the last time around, that for us to be totally passive in this next go-round could be a waste of time because I think some of us have thoughts about, not specifically what the answer should be, but some fairly broad parameters for the next proposal. And for example, that it deal with the whole beach, not just a volleyball court area as the town attempted to do in their revised presentation. And my sense was, as we listened to that, there was several commission members who just weren't comfortable with the idea of a piecemeal solution to what appears to be a bigger problem. And I think if there's, if I'm accurately reflecting what I thought I saw in our reaction to the proposal, I think if they walk away from a nice workshop and they don't know that, and in fact, we do feel that way, but we don't tell them, I'm not sure that's helpful.
So we need the town to know what our true feelings are.
Big picture, you know, I want to see so many cubic yards of sand in this location, but.
It is on their application. So it's productive. Yeah. Yeah, I think John's concern was, it was, he thought it should be less of a zoning commission meeting because we're never supposed to show prejudgment or show how we think things really ought to be done. We're the fact finders and decision makers at the end. And, you know, it's a balancing act for us, but I'm going to go back at him again and.
And it was perfectly reasonable to recap what our concerns were in the last meeting when we denied the application.
Yep.
And I know there's new concerns since then, but I think we articulated them all pretty well at the last, you know, last meeting. But summing them up and presenting to them, I think would be productive.
So there are two questions. How can the commission be more involved in the workshop? And can we restate our views at the end of our process in the winter? Capture what we just said?
All right, Rick, can I chime in? I actually was resonating to what John said when you asked him about that point. And I agree. I like the idea of them going off with little input from the commission. And it's like, to me, it's like an ad hoc committee trying to work out a compromise of what each party would be willing to accept without the undue influence of the commission sitting around making comments. Kind of like that idea. And my attitude may change with respect to what I was thinking before, depending upon what they came up with.
Well, here's how I see the two views, what you're saying and what Hip is saying. John's view is we sit back and we listen to both sides and we facilitate and try and get from eye to eye. And that's your point. Hip's point is, I'm going to say this in a personal way, but I don't mean that. I mean the commission. The commission had, and you've articulated better than anybody else, the commission had fairly considerable and considered views of what was wrong with that application, which is why we denied it, and what ought to be on the table for the future. And if we can't say that at the outset of this workshop, then we're liable to get the same type of application over with. So, yeah, I see the two points and this is worth another discussion to try and maximize our involvement, but not put our thumb on the scale.
They're not necessarily mutually exclusive.
Yeah.
And one option would be, I suspect, to have Bill, under your direction, Vic, make sure that the parties going into the workshop are thinking about what we said at the end of the last go-round.
Okay, others? Anything else? Okay, good. 200-foot boundary issue. I didn't have to print that. The really, the reason, I mean, you've seen this document two or three times. I haven't had anybody at the last meeting say anything about clarification of words, which was to add all structures on lots within 200 feet of the outer boundaries of the lot. So, and then get pictures from the public view, the street or the waterway. What I wanted, since we had the meeting and we can put this on, if you did put this on the agenda, our regulation, our ordinance says, the applicant shall also provide the commission with all required comparative information regarding lots within 200 feet of the lot on which the development is proposed. And that gives us a considerable amount of latitude to get the kind of information we think we need when we're reviewing one of these applications. So I thought, let's, we're in public and let's see if there's other things anybody thinks should be on it. If it's suggested for each one of these design review applications, maybe we'll get a site plan. Maybe we don't have to have a formal engineering one, but where on the property is the structure going to be placed? Things like that. And there may be other ideas. So since we had the time, I thought, you know, I'd put it on the agenda and want to discuss it if we want to. Do we want to?
I think the wording clarifies the intent. I mean, I'm finally ready to just now.
I think that fixes the structures on lots 200 feet away. That one, we've batted that around two or three meetings and haven't gotten any different feedback from that. The last one was one and afterwards she said, oh, I read the wrong one. So, you know, it was that simple. All right, this can be a work in progress because the language there allows us kind of to put it on the agenda and decide if we want or not to piece of information. We don't have to make a hard test. We don't need a text amendment to do this. That's the key.
Yeah, my thought about the site plan, using the word site plan, it's a term that's defined in our regulations. And what I think I would like to see, any time somebody is expanding a footprint or adding structure on their property is a map. It could be a sketch of the property, but to scale and showing where the new footprint or the new structure is going to be located along to the boundaries. And it's, it's pretty simple to do in that you can go on the GIS, the G I S, you enter the address and up pops a map of the property and you print it out. And with a ruler, you know, it gives the scale, with a ruler, you can just say, you know, it came up with regard to the property on Brook Street and they were going to add a tool shed in the backyard. And there was just, there was no information about really where it was going to be. Based on the application, it could have been anywhere. Bill had a conversation with the applicant and the applicant convinced Bill that it's okay. He's going to be far enough from the two boundaries and blah, 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 and therefore we should approve it. I mean, that's really sloppy way to proceed. We should have had a map of the parcel and the in-scale sketch. It could be hand drawn. Doesn't, you know, don't need an architect. Don't do anything fancy. Don't need an engineer. But we should be given enough information so that we understand what we're approving.
Everybody agree or does anybody disagree?
I make sense of that. I mean, some simple as this, they have to be marked up with what they're doing. Not necessarily needed for a dormer, but if they're expanding the property or if they're. there's some relevant aspect of it that's more visible than others, I mean, having some perspective of where it stands or in relationship to everything else is perfectly, is useful and perfectly reasonable to ask for. As long as we give a definition so people don't think that they have to have an architect site plan.
Yeah, 'cause I was looking at that one, and I would agree with that comment. You know, my concern, I like the idea of knowing where it is on the lot. I don't want to miss a place and we have to get an architect or whatever, but I had flipped to section 11, which is with site plan. And the only thing I would comment on is there's really not a, and I looked at the definitions, definitions, there is not a definition for what the site plan entails. I guess it could be anything, but it's not specifically where the.
But the way Nip described that, I think, eases the rough edges or the sharp edges of a site plan. And if we say it's a map to scale that shows all structures on the property and any increase in footprint, that's gonna.
Yeah, that would work fine.
Yeah, well, let me draw something up and get things up.
I mean, it does talk about like the content of the site plan has to happen, is a 11 ton of bricks.
Which I think might be more detailed than what we necessarily need for a lot of this. So that's just why, just that what you labeled this is.
Yeah, 'cause it says here, such plans should be prepared and sealed by a professional engineer and/or an surveyor registered to practice in the community. So, I mean, that's not what they're talking about.
All right. That's why I'd stay away from the term site plan.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Good. Before we go to status of alternates, I missed a point on, I remember, one, the public input process, only to announce one thing and ask a question as the commission for the other. I'm gonna meet with the church folks tomorrow on logistics, tables, microphone stands, wifi if we decide to use this to do our public record video tape. And it occurred to me, I think we ought to have a floor stand for people to come up and speak. They have two microphones, I already know that. And then a, ideally a table mount for a microphone, so whoever the speaker is at the table can, you know, have it in front of them. And then I kept wondering, you know, it's a church, so there's not probably a whole lot of space like this up at the front, you know, you can have the pews start up and you get the stuff in the background, and I don't think any one of us wants to be in a public for that meeting.
Can I have a meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, who would never call? So the question is, two approaches. Should I have a big table for five commissioners and staff? Or should I have a smaller table and just serve as the hearing officer? And you guys could sit in the front pews and be available. I don't expect to take any questions, I don't expect to answer people when they say, why are you doing this? I haven't got my introductory remarks ready to send out to you to review, but this is for them hopefully listening to our guidance to tell us what they would like us to change and why. It's not gonna be a debate. I said it in the rules. I'm avoiding that word, but I'm gonna look it up tonight to be sure. It's a term of art, the rules. So, I mean, the bottom line for this part of the debate is, do you think it's better to have a hearing officer and you guys can sit and reflect as you're listening and you don't have to be facing down, people might be in an ugly mood? Or would you rather be up here?
I prefer to see the people, whether, you can be off to the side more, but I don't wanna be in the bride or the groom section.
Okay. Everybody agree with that? So, a big table.
I mean, the logistics and the space being what they are, and spread out as much as, you know, realistic, but.
Okay.
I just forgot. I have more of a zebra who's talking than what's going on.
And that was the only other thing I had on that, so. Okay, so now, status of alternates. This was, Nip had brought this up, and I think it was a good point to bring up, and it's a good point to debate tonight. We're getting to the end of the development process. Once we have that public meeting, we may wanna go back on some parts to the drawing board and do things differently. We won't know that until we hear the public comment we received. But we had always intended that at the time that we started to get public comment, the alternates would, because we've gotten great mileage out of Larry and Lynn for two years, we would, they would withdraw to the audience and the five elected commissioners would then be confronted with the what-to-do question. So that's how I would tee this up. I have some other views, but I don't wanna offer them first. I just open it to suggestion or to discussion. How does the commission feel about the role going forward? And by that I mean after July eighth.
I have some news.
Okay, Dana.
I want to lobby on behalf of allowing alternates to continue to speak, but not to vote during STR discussions. Do you mind if I take my mask off so I can try and read this? Two years ago, when the commission once again took up the issue of short-term rentals, we voted in favor of allowing alternates to speak on the subject, although they were not allowed to vote. We did this for a specific purpose of being able to hear additional ideas and insights, and to give us some additional wisdom that we otherwise might not have had. Indeed, that decision has paid off in spades. Over the last two years, Lynn Marshall and Larry Dunn have made invaluable contributions to the committee, offering insights and information about how other towns were handling short-term rentals. They gathered a ton of information that commissioners would otherwise not have had the time to gather. So we've established a precedent for alternates being allowed to speak on short-term rentals. The addition of three alternates who were recently elected would add even more diversity to the discussion. The argument that the addition of three alternates would slow the discussion or make our deliberations more ponderous, I think is misguided. There is no doubt that short-term rental discussions will become a little longer, but the positive contributions will far, far outweigh the few minutes of additional time. So I urge commissioners to allow alternates to speak.
Yep.
Yes, you know, as you meant, well, you know, I second Dana's appreciation of the contributions of Larry and Lynn. They certainly done as much heavy lifting as the rest of us, and they contributed a lot. However, we have recognized from the beginning that there were, a time would come when it was on the shoulder of the five elected commissioners and/or any alternates that were sitting for an elected commissioner who was unable to participate, to process everything and reach final decisions. Now, we've added this step of the information session, but in my opinion, it is de facto a public hearing. I'm not calling it that, but I think it's serving the same purpose in the process. What was teed up for discussion represented the thinking and decisions of all of the commissioners, including the alternates, at that point in time. Having done that, you listen to what those people have to say, the public has to say, but at that point, I feel the commission needs to tackle it in a reduced number, more orderly way, and just move through it to the final decisions on what we can take to a public hearing. And I make a motion to that effect.
Would you mind holding off a little so everybody gets one opportunity to comment before we have a decision and a motion on the floor? It's your choice, you can make it if you want.
If there's no second.
I'm gonna second the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could you either speak up louder or take your masks off, 'cause it's very difficult to hear what you're saying.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor. Restate it, please. That, following the information session, that the discussions going forward, based on the draft that was presented and the input that is received at the information session, that those discussions and decisions be limited to the elected, five elected commissioners, and if there's an alternate who's sitting for an absent commissioner, but that we not include in those discussions and decisions, even the discussions, the five alternates. That was my motion. Okay. Second, I bet Steel. Okay, now, comment on the motion.
I don't think it's particularly fair to drop the new alternates in particular in this very complex discussion that we've been having at the very end of it, without the benefit of the perspective and the input and all the feedback that we've had that have led to this discussion, to the point where we are with this proposed regulation. That's one point. And the other is, I was under the impression all along that the way Nip described it and is reflects how John Casey recommended it, and that was our process. We're gonna get to the end of this and take all the input that we've gotten from the alternates and from this public hearing workshop thing, and then we're gonna move on with making decisions more based on business as usual. And having the alternates be this active was good for this unique thing, but it's pretty unusual, you know? So.
Okay. Anybody else on the motion? Beth?
Going on what Greg said, I mean, I feel like there's a certain dynamic when we're gonna actually come down to a date on this. It's gonna be the five, and if somebody's sitting for one of us, fine. But I think we have to start working together, just the five. You know, the dynamic changes when we add alternates in the mix, but we've gotta understand how we're gonna work together as a cohesive five-person unit to get whatever it is to the finish line. And for that reason, I'm in favor of the motion, and I would recommend to my fellow commissioners, if they vote for it.
Okay, others?
Suppose there is no finish line in the next two months. Suppose it's voted down, and suppose we continue to deliberate short-term rental for the next year or so. It's a possibility, and that replicates what we had over the last two years. We will, in fact, need the advice and counsel and extra eyes of the five alternates, two of which we've had over the last two years, which have been invaluable. I don't think you can assume, that's what I'm trying to say, that this is gonna be the end. It may not be.
Thank you. My observations, a couple of them. I agree Larry and Lynn have been very, very useful and productive. Time for development is over, time to.
People can't hear you in the back, I think.
I still can't hear them. Time for developing, development is about over, and it's time to decide, I get that, and we always agreed it would then revert to the five commissioners. Two defining points, though, the new alternates will not have the benefit of two years of the discussions we've had. And that's a little worrisome, even if we go forward and we do more development, that it'll always be, we may often be explaining why we got to where we got after successive meetings where we had to pound ourselves into submission before we got a majority vote on something, and there would be a certain catch-up mode that would go on. That doesn't make me entirely support the motion, it just gives me some food for thought. The other major point in my mind is Dana just kept it great. After the July eighth meeting, then we're gonna have a meeting a couple of weeks later and we're gonna start to decide what to do. And that could run the gamut that I didn't hear anything that changed on mine, we're gonna put that proposal on the street in the formal process and move forward. That's the case, we don't need the alternates. That's one extreme view. The other extreme view is, boy, I heard a bunch of stuff and it really made me stop and think and reconsider, and I wanna talk about 12 different things in there and wanna keep talking about them. If we decide that way, having alternates involved may be very useful. So, I'm kinda thinking, we don't need to decide this right now, all we need to do is be prepared to decide it at the time that we decide how we intend to proceed after the July eighth meeting. I don't have super strong feelings one way or another, but it's kinda where, vote if we have to, but maybe we don't have to, is kinda where I think we are.
I'd rather decide now than if you wanna change your minds later, we can revisit it. Let's have a decision on the table instead of just keep kicking the can.
Because we discussed this, I wanna say the last meeting or the meeting before, and you had suggested that we raise it at another meeting. Well, here we are. The motion's been made, it's for the second, and I say we have a vote.
Okay. Any other comments on motion? Seeing none. The motion is, to remind ourselves, following the information session and into subsequent discussions, it will be by the five commissioners plus an alternate if seated for an absent member. That capture and listen? Okay. So we'll get the language better in the minutes, but that's the.
Good.
Okay. Okay, this is a loaded issue. Let's do a roll call of this. Nip Tanner?
All right.
Casilla?
Um.
Dana Ovea?
No.
Mike Paul?
Aye.
Okay. Chairman doesn't have to vote when it's three to one.
Chicken.
I know. I'd have voted no. You know, I'll put myself down as a no. Okay, motion carries three to two. If that's right, motion carries, yes. Okay. So, after the July eighth meeting, we will go into our five commission mode and see how we proceed. Okay.
In recognizing how this may play out, I certainly hope all five alternates attend the information session and attend subsequent meetings at which we are making decisions. So in the event they're called on to sit in, they are as up to speed as possible. I don't wanna feel as they have no purpose, but their purpose is more the classic alternate purpose going forward.
Okay. Is there any new business for the commission? I see none.
Point of order?
It's a business meeting, there's no public comment.
Okay, I'll say what I gotta say anyhow. When you go to your meeting, you need to have either very good microphones or no masks because it's impossible to hear.
You can tell us that later, Zell, but respect the process. If I let you speak, I have to let anybody else in the audience speak, and that's why I tried to stop you. You don't get to speak just 'cause you want to. Stop. You can approach us after the meeting and make that same comment, we'll be fine with it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm up to two.
Casilla?
Second.
Blake Paul? We're, are we fixed, Adam?
Aye.
We're adjourned. I have to say, I am really happy we're back together.
Yeah.
Our meeting's in order.